Recording in progress.
All right, I'm gonna call the city council meeting to order a city council meeting for nine twenty-one twenty-one. We did the pledge of allegiance a half hour ago, so I think we'll dispense with that this now. Uh, roll call.
Okay, council member Dulis?
Here.
Council member Owen?
Here.
Council member Graves?
Here.
Council member Mills?
Here.
Council member Pittman?
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor.
I'll declare a forum. Any questions on the agenda? Pretty lengthy for today.
Uh, we might, uh, take the license to move the broadband a little GPS.
Okay, is Rodney coming?
He's coming, he's lost.
He's lost? He's been here before.
I know, but he was used as a G- I don't know where he was coming from, but it was sitting out in the building somewhere.
All right, we'll leave it where it is on the agenda, but if we have to, we'll skip over it. Rodney Balance is coming to talk to us about another grant opportunity relative to broadband, and this just came up today, so.
It's not even pulled up, I think.
So, um, all right, maybe by the time we get to it, he'll be here.
I move that we approve the agenda?
Looks like it.
Lynn made the motion to approve the agenda, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Pat seconded it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, the agenda's approved. We have minutes from the August seventeenth regular meeting and August twenty-fourth special meeting. Uh, any questions on the minutes?
Make the motion to approve the minutes from eight seventeen and eight twenty-four.
Ken made a motion to approve the minutes from eight seventeen and eight twenty-four, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lynn seconded it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes are approved. All right, ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, and in memoriam. I think, I'm gonna mention in memoriam, Voice Williams passed away. Voice obviously didn't have anything to do with the city, but in the history of Holiday Island, Voice Williams did a lot. He was on the board of commissioners, he was, I think, temporary or acting or whatever district manager for a while. He was very active in community affairs, especially Rotary. He and his wife Phyllis, just like a week ago, moved over to Bentonville or Rogers, somewhere over there, and he passed away. So, we'll miss Voice, he was a, he was a nice guy. All right, proclamations, I do have a proclamation here. Um, City of Holiday Island proclamation, whereas since November twenty-seventeen, Carroll County Youth Literacy Rotary Foundation has been registering children from birth to five years old to receive free age appropriate developmental books mailed monthly to their homes through the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And whereas the, I'm gonna abbreviate this, the foundation has touched over fourteen hundred children in Carroll County, shipping over thirty thousand books, and whereas less than forty percent of our children are passing grade-three level reading tests, literacy incurs a massive economic toll on our community and keeps the individual from reaching full potential. And whereas this is a great time to get into good habits to help children develop a love for books which builds bonds, supports early writing and reading skills, enhances vocabulary, and prepares children for school success. And whereas this is a time to encourage the preschool children to hold a good book and explore new worlds. And whereas this is a time which celebrates families sharing the joy of reading and learning together. And whereas it's never too early to start reading regularly, and it's never too late to learn more. And whereas the key to developing young learners into engaged, active, and innovative thinkers is instilling in them a love of reading at an early age. And whereas reading is the gateway to countless skills and possibilities, it sets children on a path to a lifetime of discovery, broadened perspective, and powers to dream. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Dan Keys, Mayor of the City of Holiday Island, to hereby proclaim the month of November as Family Literacy Month in the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, proclaimed on this date. So I'm going to sign this proclamation.
Hang on, I'll take a picture of you signing.
Of me signing, yeah.
You should get five different pins like the president does, so you need to get one.
And. Okay. All right. Okay, moving on then, any other ceremonials, recognitions, or in memoriam? I thought we'd move on to standing committees and commissions. Broadband, first of all, before we get into that, let me update everybody on our county property tax for roads that we're supposed to be getting our share of. Wes and I thought that we had this all under control, Wes and I and our city attorney, thought that we had this all taken care of. We went through all of the individuals at the county and talked to them. I guess we never directly talked to the county judge, but it ended up basically being a communication between our attorney, Justin Eichmann, and Tony Rogers, the attorney, prosecuting attorney for the county. And basically, what it comes down to is, is that no one at the county wanted, well, feels like it's their job or that they have the authority to make a decision on this. And they, I believe, were waiting for a legal opinion from Tony. We believe that after Justin Eichmann talked to Tony, and Tony talked to the Arkansas Association of Counties Attorney and Municipal League Attorneys, that Tony agreed that we were entitled to the money. And we believe that he talked to Judge Barr about it. However, when Wes followed up, um, in the last couple of days, to find out where the money was, why we weren't getting paid yet, the treasurer, correct me if I'm wrong Wes, but basically the treasurer said she hadn't been instructed to dispense the money yet, that it was the, that the collector had to tell her to do it, the collector said she has nothing to do with it. Maybe the city clerk is the one that decides, and so he called the city clerk, and she said she's got nothing to do with it. It's gotta be, it must be a legal opinion, so it got down to, back to Tony Rogers again. So we've gone full circle twice on this. I talked to Justin, Tony said he was gonna call Justin. Tony told Wes that he sorta remembered all of this, and he sorta remembered an attorney general's opinion, but that was all, he just had this, a sort of a memory of this. So I called Justin, and Justin agreed with us that he thought we had this all resolved. He was going to call Tony also, if Tony, if Tony didn't call him, and discuss it one more time. I suggested that, you know, that maybe when we went through this the first time, we should have followed up with a letter to Judge Barr and to Tony Rogers stating what we think we agreed on and requesting a response from them in writing as to what they're gonna do. In hindsight, we should have done that. Uh, I think all we really lost is time, uh, but because Justin is going to, was gonna write the letter today, get it to the county tomorrow by fax if possible, and, um, and he was going to explain the whole thing again and indicate that even though it's late in the year, the City of Holiday Island still expects to receive the full amount that we were due for the entire year. And he will request a, a response in writing from the county, so maybe we'll put an end to this. Obviously, there's no incentive on the part of the people at the county to make this happen, so.
So Justin is putting this request in writing now?
He is going to, yes, he is going to put in writing what we believe the understanding is and get them to respond in writing as to what they believe the understanding is.
Well, that treasurer sent an email back to the West, and he forwarded to us, and he said, agreed to it.
Yes.
He said, in essence, agreed she was going to make this person for August collections in September, and we would get all the money we had coming to it, now where the hell did that come from?
I don't know, but Justin is on top of it. I'll keep everybody posted on that. Okay, now we can move on to broadband grant applications. Jerry?
Talked to Rodney this morning, and he got an update on the grant and agreed to come in and tell us about the new development.
Well, it's good to see everybody again.
Can you go over to the podium?
Oh, sure, sure.
They will, but he's just putting it in front of the podium.
There's no microphone or anything over there?
But he'll, he'll be talking into this.
Okay, we're good?
Yep.
All right, well, it is good to see everybody again, appreciate the phone call, Jerry, good talking to you. There are things just going, it's like a, it's like a beehive of activity at, at the state level for broadband right now. It's like, it's just, everybody's just trying to do everything, and I don't know if anybody knows what's going on. But we're still continuing with our original grant application process. However, we've added a second application as well, one that encompasses the entire northern part of Carroll County. I learned that the, I learned two things recently. One was, we could go ahead and apply for the deployment grant, which would be the larger grant that would enable us to do the engineering, the feasibility studies, buy the equipment, and install it with everything without having to go through the smaller grant that we originally discussed. So we, the grant writer is working on both attack methods. The smaller one, the engineering grant, as well as going ahead with the deployment grant. I found out this morning, in a meeting at ten-thirty I was in with the, actually with the county judge in Benton County, that the state is allocating four million dollars to hire a consultant, a broadband consultant. So, they may not be funding the smaller grants, and this is just my interpretation. They may not fund the smaller grants because those smaller grants were for us consultants to work directly with municipalities and government entities. So, we're still waiting on the funding for the one, the grant that we sent in for variable on July twenty-seventh. That one hasn't been funded, same type of thing we're working on for you guys. To make a long story short, there's a lot of activity going on. It's just like, nobody knows, the right hand don't know what the left hand's doing, and it's hard for me to get any information about anything, but we're plowing through and doing everything we can do to try to get funding to put fiber optics to the home everywhere that's desired in Carroll County.
Does this larger grant program have a name and instructions and everything else?
Yes, sir, it is, it's called the Arkansas Rural Connect Program, ARC, A-R-C. We actually were granted an award from the same program earlier this year for a project, a wireless project we did over near Oak Grove, Arkansas.
Okay.
Here in Carroll County, so.
Well, this one.
Yes, sir.
All that money's coming out of, where do they go on it, the?
Rescue plan.
Well, the. The rescue plan act, there's the CARES act, there's.
Yeah, they.
It's coming from the CARES.
They've got billions of dollars bound to the state level.
All right, yeah, it's coming from the CARES.
Uh, it's just all over the place.
And now there's infrastructure money, I mean, it's like, they're throwing all this money at states, and the state doesn't know what to do with it. The maps are all wrong because the FCC's method of collecting data from internet service providers like us is, is too broad. It doesn't, it is, it, for example, in this area, well, outside of Holiday Island and inside of Holiday Island, there's a wireless internet company located in Nixon, Missouri, that shows they're providing thirty megabits per second download internet in this entire area. I have a letter, the owner of that company's a friend of mine, he wrote a letter saying, "We don't provide that speed. We can't provide that speed." So, that's how messed up their maps are, but when it comes to funding, that's the map they go by because if you're already covered, they won't give you the money. So, the grant writer's working with us, we're working with politicians trying to filter through all this mess and just seeing if somebody's anxious, if somebody will help us get these grants delivered, awarded, and so we can get to work for you.
I sat in on a Municipal League web webinar a couple of weeks ago, and they were talking about the infrastructure money that is, could be coming after the first of the year. And they also talked about the issue of these bogus maps like we're dealing with here with Cox, say, they provide, you know, eighty, ninety percent coverage or whatever it is, and, uh, and they, they gave some suggestions, of course, I can't remember off the top of my head, but, uh, how to combat that and to prove those wrong, so.
And I think, from what I understand, that's gonna be the first challenge for this new consultant group, is to identify errors and take measures to correct those errors in the maps. So I don't know if that's gonna grind the grant process to a halt while they're doing all this. I have, I just have no idea what, what they're, what they're doing. So, we're just moving ahead as if, as if somebody does know. And hopefully the man on the right desk can get some action taken. But honestly, talking to our representative, Arlen, for example, and others, it never hurts to get the politicians who were in Little Rock involved, letting them know when something's on the way. And I can certainly let you guys know when the grants are submitted so that they can hopefully mature just on the right desk for consideration.
Now, you would be submitting this second grant request for Holiday, for Holiday Island?
The second grant, the second grant request is actually, it's a very broad grant. It covers the entire part of northern Carroll County. So we will ask for support letters from you, Mayor, from Holiday Island, and from businesses, residents, everybody we can get. But it's actually a partnership with the county. So Judge Barr has already signed off on this thing, and we're partnered with it exactly the way we did the, the ARC grant that we were awarded in February for the smaller project. So we're following the same template, we know what worked then, we're doing exactly the same things now. And again, just, we just have to hope that it's the right timing and it's the right desk it lands on. Now, the good thing is, they, this particular grant, because it's, this is a county thing, it's not centrally located in the city, it puts, it puts us putting fiber west and east of the city, where we can just kind of enclose it at the right time. Uh, but it would, it would enable us to, to deliver fiber to you guys, even though the grant is specific, well, not specific, but designed to sort of in this non-covered areas outside of Holiday Island. Because like Jerry said, well, the map says, Cox says, a hundred percent of Holiday Island taken care of. But we know that must be true, but we can take some of this and move it into the areas that are covered. Yes, sir.
Are you aware of a, a social media app called Nextdoor? Seen that?
No.
There's a group, a Nextdoor group called Holiday Island, and if you found that and could join that, it'd be an excellent place for you to place your requirement for needs for support or your effort. And I would venture there'd be a lot of feedback from that. We also have a couple Facebook pages that are popular here, Holiday Island, Arkansas, and Holiday Island Neighbors. So those might be sources for you to post a notice of what you need, and people could give you what you need to fill your book.
That would be fantastic, and, and Nextdoor is an app?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you, if you can tell me what we need to ask, I, I can post them.
That would be fantastic, uh, but I mean.
I'm a nice guy, I only want, I only most of those now, they all got kicked off.
Well, I would like to see what's being said about them, so, uh.
Cap line.
So I, I'll definitely jump on that, in fact, when I get to the truck, when I put my thumbs in the truck, I'll download that Nextdoor app for sure.
The, the only, only caveat is, you have to be aware that it's a soapbox for whoever has an opinion.
Oh, yeah.
But a lot of people read it, so I think it'd be a place for you to, to get support for what you need.
Okay.
A lot of people talk about not having internet, not having the availability of it, the speed of it, and progress with it. So that's a frequent conversation on all those platforms.
Sure, sure.
I always come back to that very thing, that, that eventually we're going to have to have our own data to support what the reality is here, or we're gonna get overlooked. And, um, so at, at some point, we may just have to put together a, you know, our own task force to go door to door and check people's internet speed, ask them if they even have internet, if they've tried to get it, what it would cost them to get it if they wanted it, and, and, uh, just, you know, good, solid data to refute the maps that are floating out there because otherwise it's gonna be our word against Cox.
Yeah, I think it's a good start what Lynn suggested. I mean, I've got two or three people that said that they would write a, or a letter of anecdotal evidence that they can't get cable or have spotty coverage. But I, you'll get a ton of responses through Nextdoor and a couple of those Facebook groups.
That's great. Well, as you know, the grant writer was on vacation for a while, she's back, and she is working diligently to get these, these things submitted. So, uh, she was on that meeting with me this morning, Sam, has texted me twice since then. So she's, she's actively working on this for us. Uh, I hired her, we're paying her, so she's, she's working the job like a series.
We're good for you, then.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And we just gotta hope that the grants come through, so I'm not, you know, I'm not stuck with totally with a bill. But I'm confident enough that I've got my money out there that I can have.
Okay. Any other questions for Rodney?
Do you need directions to get back home?
You know, my, keep your phone handy. I ain't, that thing took me up Summit to, to, what do you, Saturn?
Oh, my God.
You should knock on some doors, but that's the area, some of the area.
Oh, I can tell, I can tell, yeah, I mean, it's like.
E-GI-S doesn't work up there either.
That one works up there.
I, I have heard from a couple of people that Cox goes up to about, about a thousand feet from their land, and they will not, they will not even extend the cable.
They will for a price, for a big price.
Yeah. No, not all of Holiday Island has cable.
We need to document as much of that as we can so that we can challenge.
Be prepared.
Also, you know, the data that's out there.
How far the cable is.
If we could produce a map of the gap area.
Do you, do you know what word ca, uh, fiber is in Holiday Island now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it's, it's, it's a, it's a truck line, um, basically one from Missouri to Benton County.
Yes, that's those white poles with the orange top, and that's, are they the markers for?
Well, the fiber, a lot of the fiber that's run here is over it, this area.
Okay, yeah.
I guess they ran into a lot of rock.
Really fine rock or I can't.
Um, let's see, I had a question for you.
I think it'd be easy to document where the, where the cable is.
Oh, I know what it was. In that original application packet I sent to you guys, there's a link in there for a speed test directly to the state. If there are people out here who don't have twenty-five down speeds, they need to go to that and click that speed test, take the speed test, tell the state who their provider is, and it'll be documented on the map. And it shows the powers that be in Little Rock, and hey, there is not, you know, five gigabit speed here. I'm only getting five meg down, something like that.
There's your first post, Jerry.
Yeah, in fact, that would be one, we probably would, a high sit newsletter to get to everybody.
Uh, I would, I would highly recommend to say, if you don't have at least twenty-five three, use this to prove it to the state so that we can document the need for this, for this grant money.
That automatically logs that to the state then?
Yes, sir, it does.
What's the name of it?
Yeah.
I've got it.
If you can't find that link, just text me later and I'll send it back to you, okay? Because it's.
No, I've got it.
But getting that out to everybody would certainly alleviate a lot of the questions.
Is, is there a way for us to get a report of how many people have responded to that?
Anybody can look at that map at any given time, and it shows dots where it's been tested.
Okay.
And you can put your cursor on the dot and show what test, what the results were.
Excellent.
So I'll make sure that.
That's all we need, yeah.
I'll make sure you have that, so, I mean, it, it's, it is real time, and it is logged. Everybody gets to see exactly what the speed is in that area and who the provider is.
Do we have access to that, too?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's what I was saying, if, if Jerry wouldn't mind sharing that, and if, like I said, if you can't find it, you let me know.
No, I've, I've got everything printed out still on my lap, I've had here, so I'll say.
Perfect, but that would be one great way of documenting at the state level exactly the challenges here.
It'd be interesting that, that once we put that word out and monitor it over two or three days, see if, see if it grow, does it grow?
I'm guaranteed it will grow, I'm guaranteed it will. So, uh, maybe that's a little tidbit that I can leave you with, it's a little bit of good information to help you with.
Okay, thank you for grabbing over.
Appreciate it, it's always a pleasure to see you guys, and I look forward to talking to you again soon.
Okay, um, anything else, Terry, on broadband?
No, I mentioned that, that webinar, uh, I've got a recording of it if anybody wants to watch it.
All right, uh.
Wes sat in on some of it.
Is there anything, we have a planning commission on the agenda, but.
I can just say the things that we need to work on, I need a, a current plat map. The last one I have is dated January twenty-twelve, so we can work on our master street plan. Uh, we need to work on our current zoning, and I've done some of that homework by creating a spreadsheet, looking at the covenants that are available, and noting how areas are zoned and the exceptions that are in those. The problem is, there are quite a few that I don't have, so. The problem is, there are quite a few that I don't have, so I probably need to make a trip to the county offices to see if they have a copy of the county. And then we need to, um, document the land owned by Hy-Sid, and hopefully that information's readily available, so that we can do part of that, um, zoning map, but also part of the, uh, facilities plan. So those are the agenda items that I have to work on for the next few weeks.
Okay.
I was gonna ask for volunteers.
You can always ask for volunteers.
Okay.
Are you officially asking some volunteers?
And it's crickets. That's all I have.
Oh, you could probably get some volunteers, but you'd have to tell them specifically what you're wanting them to volunteer to do.
Okay.
So, okay, uh, moving on then, uh, no special committees, uh, old business, second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-seven. I guess we don't need a motion to put this on the floor, since we're already.
You really have to have a motion to read it, or?
Um.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Go ahead and make a motion to do something.
I make a motion that we have a second reading of ordinance twenty, twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-seven.
Ken made a motion for the second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-seven, an ordinance establishing wards for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas Arkansas Code annotated ACA fourteen forty-four one-on-one states that as soon as practicable after an incorporated town becomes a city of the second class, the city council shall form the city into a number of wards that to it will seem to best serve the interests of the city. And whereas said code also states that it shall be the duty of the council to see that each ward has as nearly an equal a population as to each of the other wards, as would best serve the interest of the taxpayers of the city. And whereas on the twenty-third day of March twenty-twenty-one, the secretaries of the state of Arkansas certified Holiday Island to be a city of the second class. And whereas the estimated population of the wards are Ward One, seven twenty-one, Ward Two, seven forty, and Ward Three, seven ninety-six, albeit ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. That the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, shall be organized into three wards according to the map and legal descriptions attached to this ordinance, and that upon approval of this ordinance, the attached map and legal description will be filed with the clerk of court of Carroll County, Arkansas, passed and approved, uh, it'll be passed and approved on the, at, at the, at next month's meeting. I don't remember, did we vote on approving the second reading? I don't remember the procedure on that.
I thought that's what Ken.
He made a motion to read it, read it. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the second reading, just in case.
Oh, to approve it, okay.
I think that's valid.
I'll move that we approve the second reading.
Second.
Linda made a motion to approve the, uh, ordinance on a second reading, and Lynn seconded it. Uh, roll call, vote?
Councilmember Dumas.
Yes.
Councilmember Elway.
Yes.
Councilmember Graves.
Yes.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
All right, the second reading is approved, we'll do the third reading at the next council meeting. All right. Moving on, I put a, put on here a discussion on the sheriff's contract, although I really don't have anything new to add, so I'll just briefly state again where we're at.
Believe it.
What about that?
Twenty-one.
You gotta get the planning area map.
The ordinance.
Twenty-one-ten.
Order.
Oh, I, yep, never mind, I skipped, uh, never mind, I won't even explain why I made that mistake. I'm gonna blame it on my glasses or the poor lighting here.
It is, it's poor lighting.
All right.
I move that we put ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash ten on the floor for discussion.
Second.
Uh, Lynn made the motion, put it on the floor for discussion, and Jerry seconded it. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we shall discuss it.
Shall we read it?
Read it.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash ten, an ordinance established in the city of Holiday Island Planning Area Map, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas Arkansas's municipal planning statutes ACA fourteen fifty-six four oh one and following require that planning commissions prepare a planning area map and description designating the area within the city's territorial jurisdiction for which they will make studies and prepare plans and recommended ordinances and regulations. And whereas, after due consideration, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, has approved by resolution, HICPC R twenty-one dash nine, a planning area map and description. And whereas is the desire of the city, the desire of the, the city council that said planning area be formally approved by ordinance, thus established in the city of Holiday Island Planning Area Map, now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, section one, that the map entitled City of Holiday Island Planning Area Map twenty-twenty-one dash ten, which is attached heretofore and made a part hereof, and the description thereof, which follows, both of which have been approved by the HICPC, be and hereby approved and adopted. Located all in Carroll County, Arkansas, with territory situated in sections nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty-four, and thirty-five, in township twenty-one north, range twenty-six west, more particularly described as commonly, commonly described as the beginning at the most westerly corner of Holiday Island city limits and joining the White River Table Rock Lake, thence southeast to a point located on East Section twenty line at approximately twenty-five hundred thirty-one feet south of northeast corner section twenty, thence south along section line to a point located on West Section twenty-eight line at approximately one thousand six hundred sixty-four feet south of northwest corner section twenty-eight, thence southeasterly to the northwest southwest corner of section thirty-five, thence east to the northeast southeast corner of section thirty-five, thence north along the East Section Line of section thirty-five and twenty-six to a point located where Highway twenty-three east side right of way intersects the East Section twenty-six line, thence along Highway twenty-three north along the east side right of way of Highway twenty-three north to the Missouri State Line, thence west, west on the Missouri State Line to a point on the northwest city limits of Holiday Island, thence continue along the city limits of Holiday Island to the point of the beginning. Section two, that a duly certified copy of this ordinance shall be forwarded to the mayor of the town of Beaver and the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, and should be filed of record in the Carroll County Recorder's Office. Section three, severability, the provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared severable, and if any section, phrase, or provision shall be declared or held invalid, such an invalidity shall not affect the remainder of the section's phrases or provisions. Section four, emergency clause, the need to make use of the provisions of ACA fourteen fifty-six four oh one and following of the Arkansas Code of nineteen eighty-seven annotated as amended to create a City of Holiday Island Planning Area Map in order to adopt and enforce plans for the coordinated, adjusted, harmonious development of the city of Holiday Island and its environs, and the activities associated with urban planning is immediate and an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage, passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this twenty-first day of September twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, and the map is attached to the ordinance?
Yes, the last page is a, an image of the map.
Right, um, I'm gonna open up the floor for discussion here. When we're done with the discussion, we will have to have a motion to, um, declare the emergency, and then we'll vote on the actual ordinance.
Don't we have to suspend the second, third reads as well?
I don't think we have to do it, because we've declared the emergency.
Yeah.
This doesn't fall under the referendum type passage.
Although the motion to declare an emergency includes suspending the second and third reading. Any other discussion on the ordinance itself? If not, I'll entertain a motion to declare the emergency.
So moved.
Want to state, state the motion?
I move that we accept section four emergency clause as stated in the ordinance.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Lynn made the motion, Jerry seconded. Any discussion on the emergency clause? I could, I can say, you know, for the record, why we're declaring it an emergency is because we're on a timeline to be ready to take over all the planning commission, uh, activities by the end, by really the first week of December, so we don't have ninety days to, uh, work on, uh, approving this map. So, uh, if there's no further discussion, we'll take a roll call vote on declaring the emergency.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elway.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, we've approved the emergency clause, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Make a motion, we adopt ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one-zero.
Ken made the motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one-zero. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Pat seconded it. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elway.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. The ordinance passed. Now, with, oh, any further ado, the sheriff's contract. Um, like I said, there's really nothing new from the discussion we had at the, in the joint VOC City Council workshop. Um, I'm, I'm still talking to Justin about how to best situate ourselves so that we meet the intent of the law relative to having a police department or a sheriff's contract, um, in order that we can, um, set up a district court, uh, with, uh, Eureka Springs and the county. So he's gonna be sending me some, uh, draft ordinance of how to do that, that we will take up in the next meeting. So, uh, I'll have more on that in the future. But, uh, the situation is still basically unchanged. Uh, we feel that we have to have a contract with the county to provide police protection in order for us to qualify to be, uh, to be able to set up a district, district court. And the district court is required not just for, uh, traffic violations and criminal offenses and things like that, but we need it to also process citations for other code violations. So there's code enforcement and law enforcement, both have to go through the same district court. Okay, uh, discussion on advertising expenditures, Linda?
Uh, yeah.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm the district court, and I talked to the mayor of Eureka Springs last week, and he was supposed to send me a copy of the ordinance. I called her three times, and tomorrow I'm gonna call the mayor, I've been dealing with this. Uh, but I did, you know, we talked about, I did call the district court, and they have a session, uh, on October the first at one and two P M.
Ken, I thought could be a good idea, maybe we should go over there and see what happens in district court, so we know what we're supposed to be planning for.
I, I think it might be a good idea to get an idea of, of, of the parties involved.
Get a ticket, and then.
Yeah.
No, of course, Ken, I don't wanna do it that way.
Maybe, maybe somebody here already has experience in district courts.
I've never been there, so.
Neither.
Uh, but anyway, I will call the mayor back and see what, I was able to find some financial statements today and, and see what their costs are, but I don't know what they're comprised of.
Okay.
Um, Butch said that we'd have to use our city attorney as the prosecutor, then I told him we weren't gonna do that.
Yeah, I think at this point, we need to put together a more complete plan and then bring it to the, to the council. But, you know, we're still trying to pull a lot of who sends together.
Okay.
So, discussion on advertising?
Okay, um, this situation came up in the last month, I would guess. Um, we have a, we have been doing advertising from the district's perspective. They have been running ads, they've been working with High Pro, Holiday Island.
The body of homeowners.
Promoting residential ownership, Holiday Islanders promoting residential ownership, the High Pro group. And, uh, they, they helped us with advertising for the last quite a few years, actually, and they're, they, they do a great job. And the district has done, uh, advertising for, forever that I know, some kind of advertising. Uh, I know we started it up again, or we started it, started doing more of it in twenty, twenty, you know, twenty-twelve, when I joined the board of commissioners. And, um, so we are, we're in the Eureka Springs Visitor Guide, we're in the Northwest Arkansas Tourism Association Visitor Guide, we're in the Arkansas Tourism Visitors Guide, you know, the guide that they produce every year. And these places all have websites, too, so being in the hard copy guide also gets you on the website. And, uh, the district has been footing the expense for all that advertising. Uh, plus, uh, we're, if you ever pick up the Independent Fund Guide, we've been placing ads in there for a full-page ad for three, four years, anyway. Uh, which, you know, a lot of people, when they visit Eureka, they pick up that fund guide on the street for free and flip through it, and they'll see our page on there. So, um, anyway, just to say that, that we have been funding advertising. When the Bishop lawsuit was settled, one of the clauses in that settlement was our ability and entitlement to do advertising from the district per that settlement. They were questioning our legal authority to do advertising, but in the settlement, we all agreed that we could. And so they limited that advertising to two percent of the assessment receipts, assessment revenue. Um, the budgets that Hy-Sid produces every year have budgeted an advertising expense for no more than thirty thousand, uh, knowing that thirty thousand would be under that bar of two percent of their assessment revenue. Uh, and just for information, uh, Hy-Sid, last year, which was a year hampered by the COVID stuff, had budgeted, uh, twenty thousand eight hundred dollars in the non-departmental administrative, uh, area of the budget, and they only spent fifteen thousand five hundred and thirty-six. They also had budgeted five thousand for golf, just to advertise golf, and only spent twenty-five hundred of it. Um, in twenty nineteen, which is a better year for record, uh, they had also budgeted twenty thousand eight hundred dollars in, in non-departmental, which means advertising general Holiday Island stuff. And they spent fourteen thousand eight twenty-seven, close to fifteen thousand. For golf, they had budgeted ten thousand, but only spent six thousand. So, um, anyway, the city, cities do have the authority to advertise unquestionably. It's, it's written up in state, uh, city, cities do have the authority to advertise unquestionably. It's written up in state statutes that you can have an advertising and promotion committee, an A and P committee, or a commission.
Commission.
And if you call it a commission and operate under the state rules, you have to be spending tax money collected through hotel and restaurant hospitality establishments. You have to establish the tax of the city and all that tax money goes to the commission to produce the ads and do the promoting. There's nothing to say you can't do advertising as a city outside of collecting tax money. They don't prohibit that. But if you wanted a committee to oversee it, for instance, you could just call it an advertising committee or an A and P committee and what have you. But you wouldn't be operating under the more strict guidelines that the A and P commission officially established in the statutes has to operate with. But the thing that came up recently was we are delinquent in our dues that we usually pay to the Northwest Arkansas Tourism Association.
What, you mean High Sid or?
High Sid, not the city. But High Sid, somehow in all the COVID stuff and all this, it managed not to pay two years' worth of dues. So we've been getting free advertising from them. Nevertheless, we're on their website. We are in the travel guide for last year. We were in the, on the website currently. But we aren't gonna be for long if we don't pay the dues.
We're in the middle of the mural on the wall of your border.
Yeah, we're on the wall of the airport and everything else. So, and that is, that is probably visited by more people who come to Northwest Arkansas than any other place people go to. They have an ad agency that places ads carefully in lots of magazines in the surrounding states. It's actually, they're now using the same agency that Eureka Springs just contracted with. But, you know, they, the agency produces and places ads, targeted ads in places where visitors are coming from. And they do Facebook posts and they do lots of social media things. They produce an e-newsletter quarterly that people can sign up for, and they got a lot of signups on that. And anyway, I certainly feel sure that our dues are getting our money's worth on this particular piece of advertising. The dues are twenty-five hundred dollars a year. If you have an A and P commission collecting tax money, you have to pay like five thousand dollars for our size city. Larger cities have to pay ten thousand. So I think we're getting a pretty good deal for twenty-five hundred, not having to pay restaurant, not having to collect restaurant or motel tax. So anyway, what we wanted to talk about was would the city want to take on paying for any sort of advertising, any part of this advertising that High Sid is currently doing? And especially would they want to pay for this twenty-five hundred dollars that is currently owed?
Are they expecting, was High Sid the last two years?
No, they said if we just bring it current.
If we pay this year's?
If we pay this year and then pay it again next year about this time of year.
Who's they?
It's due right now. They just invoiced us.
Who's they? High Sid?
The NADA, the Northwest Arkansas.
High Sid has decided they're not gonna do it?
No, they haven't. We are in discussions with them and maybe they will, maybe they won't. I don't know. But they might want to do it. But we could also do it and help them out, so.
I agree happy with them right now. Well, it's not for them.
I know, but if they've been doing, they're the ones that contracted it.
But it's, they are the only one that's a district doing it. Every other entity, Green Forest, not Green Forest, but Berryville, Huntsville, Siloam Springs, Bentonville, Springdale, Lowell, did I leave out one? Rogers. These are the cities that are in the advertising.
Well, I mean, they're dictating what the content is now, right?
Who's dictating?
The district. I mean, who makes up what's?
Well, if we took over that contract, we would dictate what went in. But they are now.
Okay.
And actually, High Pro does most of it.
So if we say no, are they gonna just drop it?
I hope not. Maybe we should ask, do we think the city thinks this is a valuable thing for Holiday Island to do?
Well, I think it is. I haven't been into the advertising business for a long time. Going through, getting group rates like that, it's, if we didn't on our own, we couldn't get those, both rates. But.
I think a long time, but.
I mean, it's.
The district, the district has been doing it for several years by default because they were the only, the only organization that had the resources to do anything like that.
I think we've been doing it since about twenty fourteen or fifteen.
Whenever the developers stopped promoting Holiday Island, you know, the only thing, the only organization left that had the resources to pick up the ball was High Sid. And, you know, arguably, it's more of a city function than it is a suburban improvement district function.
Whoever pays the bill also is a participant in their bi-monthly meeting.
My, my concern with taking it on is that we would be taking on an expense with no source of, with no new source of revenue to cover it. You know, we, we have a very limited budget as it is, and we have a lot of things that we absolutely positively have to spend money on, like code enforcement. I sent you all pictures of some of our finer properties that need to be dealt with.
I, I, I think they oughta, I think they oughta pay it this, I mean, they're paying for this year, which they should have paid months ago. I think that, and we need to consider it next year.
That's where I'm leaning, if we budget for it next year to take it over.
I know High Pro does a lot and they do it all out of their own pocket.
They all need to.
And, you know, so that's another consideration. Are, as a city, are we going to be depending, are we gonna, you know, stake our future growth on, you know, volunteers doing things out of their own pocket? Or do we see that as a responsibility?
I should also mention that for the last several years, High Sid has paid for an additional full page ad in their, in that guidebook and on the website to promote Holiday Island more in depth. So, and that costs about twenty-five hundred more.
I would like to see us put it off to, you know, pay it on next year. Look, I think we need to look into this B and B thing and see if there's something that we can.
We'd definitely be in a better financial condition to take it over.
I mean, at some point, at some point in time, some, some work, either High Sid or us, they're gonna have to regulate them. And if we, you know, go into the regulation and licensing and everything, there, you know, there's a tax to be collected.
Well, licensing is not a tax. It's separate from a tax. So you could do a license without a tax.
Well, I know, but if we're gonna do a license, we're gonna tax them, okay?
Well, you don't have to.
Well, we will. I mean, that's, that's where you get your advertising.
You're one vote, Ken.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you, it's a problem and every city is going into that.
What we need, what we need is a plan.
Right.
What are we gonna spend our, what are, what are we going to do for advertising and where's the revenue gonna come from to cover the expense? So at this point, you know, I don't think we're in a position to make any commitment for this year because our budget was set last, you know, January and, and advertising wasn't, I don't believe there was a line item.
Oh, but our budget's, next year's coming up very soon, so.
Yeah, but by, by October, by November, when we should be approving our budget, or December, we, we should be able to have a plan, working with the district and with High Pro. You, you know, you have a nice comprehensive list, but I would still like to see something in kind of a plan format that says, you know, we spent this money on this, the target, or the expectation, the expected results of that investment is this, you know, this is who we're targeting, and, you know, put down the list. And then, you know, we could, we could probably say that this, you know, clearly benefits the district because it's strictly promoting golf or it's strictly promoting the marina or something like that. And maybe those, the district needs to continue to pay for it.
Well, the district does get assessments, hopefully, by new people moving here too. So, and that way it also benefits the district. But we won't get any new taxpayers because we don't have any tax.
So anyway.
Might get, might get Airbnb if we were to tax Airbnb.
I, I think, I think, you know, I think there's, there's an area that we need to look at because the statute says that, you know, the funds from that have to go into advertising.
I would hope that we could collect more than twenty-five hundred or five thousand for our ads.
And I, 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 I would support.
But with our small area to collect taxes from, it's kind of.
I tried to find out how many of those were at the last, that joint meeting we had, and they said there were, Dale Ellison said there were sixty-eight, Lynn says there's two hundred. I don't know.
And I don't want to make any assumptions about how many of those will still be in existence once the zoning ordinances are in place because you can't operate a business in a, you know, you can't operate a C one business in our one residential area.
So we're C three, whatever C we call it.
Yeah. So that's, that's something we have to tackle. We don't want to stifle tourism. Education rentals has been a part of the economy of Holiday Island for thirty years.
If you take all those Airbnbs out.
So we have.
If you say you can't have an Airbnb in any residential area and all of them are in residential areas, you are gonna cut off tourism in Holiday Island.
We're getting into a much different subject here.
Anyway, I would support us taking that on next year.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think we're gonna pick up this year.
Well, we can talk to Danny.
Yeah.
I mean, we could call a work session and invite Vernon Anderson with High Pro and see who's.
That would be a good idea. Then we could lay out all of the, you know, like this is the magazine this money goes into and this is what this goes into. We could lay it all out on a table and everybody can see. One of the things that I don't like about spending money on advertising is because it's so difficult to get direct feedback as to what the payback is.
Well, one thing, High Pro, I may have this number a little bit elevated, but they get several hundred responses to some posts, websites, and they respond to all those with a packet of materials. So, I mean, there is value to what they're doing.
My, my guess is, is that long term, we do, we do want an advertising and promotion commission and we, it's part of economic development. And, but it's gotta be thought through as far as, you know, what they're gonna do and where the funding is gonna come from.
I know that this Northwest Arkansas Tourism Group and the advertising agency that works for them does produce a report at every meeting that shows how many hits they get on the website and the social media and all this kind of stuff. And it's very impressive to see that kind of data come through. And because, you know, every time they hit the website, there is a likelihood they might see the name Holiday Island and read something about us. Now, there's no guarantee, but if you have an ad out there, you know, you can usually count clicks on that too.
Okay. Well, we'll, as far as the council is concerned, I think we're tabling this until we bring it up. When we get into the budget process, we'll try to have some sort of a plan, more information in a plan. In the meantime, are you gonna get back with Danny and?
Yeah.
And see if they're at least going to renew that membership?
Okay.
Okay. Revising resolution, well, actually, it's resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh twenty-four, which is modifying our posting procedures. Do I have a motion to put resolution twenty twenty-one oh twenty-four on the floor for consideration?
So moved.
Lynn moved, put the motion on the floor and?
Second.
Jerry seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the reading except for the amended change.
Wait, I only heard one aye. No, this can't. Did everybody aye? Okay. I guess Ken just dropped it out of everybody else.
I make a motion that we suspend the reading of the entire ordinance and policy and only the change that's made in section three.
Okay. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Who seconded the way for the reading?
Pittman.
And Jerry?
Lynn, do you wanna go ahead and handle the change?
Sure. It appears by the reading of this resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, the only revision occurs in section three entitled approved locations for posting notifications. And bullet number four is stated, the bulletin board inside the High Sid office boardroom, excuse me, I stick wrong. It's bullet number three that changed, I'm sorry. Bullet three changes. Number three says, the bulletin board inside the city office at one ten Woodsdale Drive, Suite one oh three. It's my understanding that number three used to read inside the rec center. But because of conditions of the rec center building and the closing of that building and no available space where they moved to in the island room, this ordinance, or excuse me, this resolution and policy is being changed.
Right. And this is, I'm sure that at some point in the future, we'll be changing it again because this isn't the best location for the fifth board. However, we're required to post in five public places in order for our ordinances to be valid. So that's where we're gonna put it up until we, maybe until the rec center gets put back together or maybe we can find a place in the island room for it. And for the record, this resolution replaces resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh eighteen, which established the original five locations for posting and method for posting.
And I would like to say maybe Wes needs to, when you update the table of contents, make that note on the two resolutions. And, and I would like to say maybe Wes needs to, when you update the table of contents, make that note on the two resolutions.
And to be clear also, the policy that's attached to this is in section two, locations and durations. Bullet number three, the bulletin board outside entrance to ballroom, that's the wrong one. Number four is correct there, the bulletin board inside the city office, I'm getting confused.
They're not in the same order.
They're not in the same order.
In the policy and in the.
Okay.
Resolution.
That's why I said, all right, anyway, so it lists the city office, it's a new location.
So, this is, uh, this is kind of a harmless little change to posting procedures. Any, any discussion on the resolution? And I'll entertain a motion to, up to, uh, approve Resolution twenty-two-one dash oh twenty-four.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero twenty-four.
Ken made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Lynn has seconded it. Um, Wes, you wanna walk on vote?
Okay, Councilmember Dumis?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
On paper, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Alrighty, moving on. Uh, just for discussion, uh, and this is totally up to the council. Do we want to join the Chamber of Commerce? Um, from an economic development perspective, um, basically, any city that's successful has a successful Chamber of Commerce. And the, any city I've ever been a party to, the city and the Chamber of Commerce have worked closely together on economic development and promoting the community and things like that. Um, so, I'm opening the floor to discussion.
I, I, I think that it's a, a move that we have to make. I think that we want the Chamber to be a fully functional entity and, and support and work with us. I think we need to join, join it and be, and have a member that sits in on the, on the meetings, and I think that would probably be best be our economic development, uh, leader.
I agree. How much does it cost?
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars. Twenty-five for an individual member chamber.
It'd be a hundred dollars for us.
For a voting member.
I think, I think we need a vote on that, council.
So, does somebody wanna make a motion to have the city join the Chamber of Commerce?
I'll make a motion to join.
And elect Jerry as our representative?
Oh, it's gonna be a double motion.
I'm not sure Jerry wants to, uh.
No, a-actually I do. I, I bet it's very important that we have a, at least an ear in those meetings and hopefully a voice.
It, uh, appointing Jerry doesn't have to be part of the motion. The motion should be that the mayor appoints someone to attend the, uh, council meetings or the, uh, chamber meetings.
Chamber meetings.
So, Pat made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ken seconded it. Any further discussion?
Shall we put that under an expense called advertising?
There's, there's a lot, there's a line item for dues and, uh.
For dues.
Supplies, dues, fees, and, okay, all right, we have a speak for.
Okay, uh, any other discussion?
Yes. Bill Dunin, is there any requirements for the Chamber finances to be public?
I do not know the answer to that.
That's one reason why we need to get involved.
Private industry. I, I can say that I've been a member of the Chamber for five years through the Alps, and they're pretty deep. They pass out a, you know, they pass out a financial sheet and expense sheet, but as far as in-depth about the things they're paid to, kinda deep, but for a hundred dollars, you know.
I just.
The only way to influence it is to be part of it, so.
Could I, uh, if Jerry's gonna be attending, can I, can we send two people a case in? Can I go as? Cause I'm working with Barbara Talbot on something for Christmas.
That's kind of a public meeting, I think.
Oh, okay.
You can either go if you want.
Anyone can join for twenty-five dollars.
We'll have one vote, you know, as far as a voting member, so.
Okay. You can adjourn, it's a pu- it has to be a public meeting, you can, I just go with that.
Well, I mean, if, if it's a hundred dollars for a voting member, I mean, I mean, let's spend, you know, another hundred and twenty-five and get, get.
Get five votes?
No, no, just, no, just get one, one voting member and then the rest, associate members or whatever they're.
Well, I mean, you can bring a guest to any chamber.
You don't need to do that. All you need to do is leave it on with you.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. I don't think we need to walk all, walk up this far. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Wes, if you wanna contact Barbara?
Okay.
Okay, purchase of office.
For regular membership.
Yes, yeah.
Voting.
Hundred dollar action for voting. Purchase of office furniture. This is, uh, totally my idea, so you can thumbs up or thumbs down. But, um, when we, when we got into the rental agreement, uh, we planned on buying a lot of stuff. You know, desks and chairs and stuff like that, all we, other than computer hardware and, and, uh, you know, internet's, you know, wiring and stuff like that, the only thing we really bought was two chairs. So, um, I, um, I, I'm, I'm not concerned that we're gonna come into the office someday and all, all the furniture will be moved out because the district still feels they own, own it and they had a use for it, so, you know, they would never do that to us without a little tax warning. But if, uh, you know, just on the outside chance that they need furniture and, uh, and, and feel like they still own the furniture that's there, I would rather that the city own it and then there's no, uh, question. And I put together this kind of offer letter that everybody's got a copy of, or you showed that anyway.
Yeah.
It's nine-hundred and sixty dollars total for, uh, two desks, a credenza, the big coffee conference table and ten chairs, one of which needs new wheels, um, a file cabinet, um, and three metal bookcases. Um, I came up with these prices. I use, I, you know, spent a career selling used equipment, so I just looked up what something would cost new and I said if it's in good shape, it's worth thirty percent of what it would be new and, uh, that's kind of right.
I mean, to replace that conference table alone would be well over a thousand dollars just easily. I mean, I'm gonna approve.
Um, so if somebody wants to make a motion that we, uh, pay the district nine-hundred and sixty dollars for this listed equipment, then the city will have assets.
Assets.
How many would we purchase furniture?
Little bit of motion that we purchased the furniture. Second?
I said.
Lynn seconded. Any further discussion?
My only concern is the lights. I emailed you. Cause in, over there, there's no windows by my desk. The desk is in the corner.
There's three, uh.
Lights, there's weak lights.
There's three floor lamps, pedestal lamps in there that I did not include in the deal. I can pencil that in and.
Like, like you need a thousand.
No, the lights aren't worth that much and, and they're not worth anything to Hycid, so I don't use them.
Add them to the list with no value.
Yeah.
That way we won't.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Wes, I'm gonna sign this.
Okay. See, does Danny, Danny need to sign it?
He's, he's already signed it.
Oh, yes, okay.
They'll initial your revision and date it.
Yeah. Bring him a check and then have him initial that. Then you can let him copy it, but. Well, I don't know that he needs a copy, but. Okay, uh, reviewing the priority list.
Nice photos.
Um, this is the list that I've been using to try to keep myself on, on track. Uh, the things in red are, you know, we're behind schedule on, but I don't feel bad about it. Appointing members to the Economic Development Task Force. We have enough horses in the race right now that I've kinda put the Economic Development Task Force on the back of it until we have the Planting Commission up and running, well, the, the maps and everything done and some ordinances passed and get a building inspector, a code enforcement officer, um, identified that has to take priority, which was on the August agenda, I've put it in red to define the position for code enforcement officer and building inspector. I have drafted position descriptions for those two positions. I've, uh, I'm running them by. Um, I asked Mickey Finefield to look at them, uh, to give me his opinion, um, and, uh, along with the, uh, building codes to, uh, just to get his, uh, input because they've been doing this or trying to do this for the last several years, and he may know of something I've overlooked, so as soon as I, if I, as soon as I'm ready to run it by everybody, I'll, uh, I'll get you guys a copy. Uh, design building permit forms, haven't even thought about that yet, but you'll probably just get whatever inventory the Planting Commission has left of their pre-printed, uh, documents, unless they have an electronic one, of which we'll get a copy of that, and then modify it to reflect the city. Um, workshop on health and sanitation ordinance, um, I said postpone until we have zoning ordinances in place. But that's basically what I've been working on for the last three or four to five days. Uh, because I, I'm getting more and more calls from people that have, um, problematic neighbors. Uh, and I mean, really problematic as far as, uh, junk in the yards, I mean, I, I drove past two of them just this, uh, last weekend that truly looked like a dump. There's everything you can imagine laying around the yard, and, uh, we need to get the health and sanitation ordinance passed and get a code enforcement officer on board so that we can start, um, citing some of these people and getting it cleaned up. It, it's really getting bad.
Are, are people living in those houses? You sent us the pictures.
Oh, yeah.
They were pretty bad. It was really bad.
Wow, I'm glad there was a tent in the driveway. And I, is that?
You can find a whole bunch more of it, you go.
It's out there on Holiday Island, right? It's after all sorts of crap.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't even think about that one. There's one on the end of Cypress Lane where they're just piling bags of garbage up. You can't see it from the road because the driveway is just, I mean, the whole front yard is growing over with trees and stuff, which is a good thing from the standpoint that you can't see it from the road, but if you look down the driveway, it's just piles of garbage bags. Maybe they're just full of leaves and not garbage, I don't know.
Are we aware if there's children involved?
I don't know.
You know.
Are they renters? Do you know?
One for sure is up on Dogwood up here, cause the person that called me, uh, is, has the rental duplex right next to it and her, her renters, who are good people, are getting real nervous about property next door. And at this point, it does, the one up on Dogwood up here has been going on for twelve to eighteen months already, cause this is the second time that, I was still on the board of commissioners, uh, yeah, the board of commissioners for the district. The first time it came up, cause Lawrence and I drove up there and looked at it.
Has Aaron looked at these properties? Is there anything Aaron can do? Does he look at property?
I don't think there's much Aaron can do unless there's a child safety issue or something like that or drugs. I, they're not doing anything technically illegal. They're violating the covenants, but that's not technically, uh, breaking the law, and, uh, until we have an ordinance in place, then they'll be breaking the law. So, I'm putting a real priority on that. I, I, I wanna get that in place here in the next, uh, couple of months for sure. And then the things on the, in the September, we're still working on the sheriff's contract. Um, we're still working on the district carpets. We won't get that done, but we are working on it. Work session on twenty-twenty-two budget, it's on the agenda to schedule that, although Wes wants to talk about proposing a different date. Um, preliminary road plans, I haven't done anything with the district on road plans for next year other than the, uh, the big, um, grant project, but we need to have a, a written agreement between us and the district for next year. First reading of, uh, building code ordinance, didn't quite make that in September, but we'll have it for October. File planning area and master street plans, given close.
The research I did says that, um, the, the, the proper person has to present them to the recorder. So, I'm guessing it'll either have to be the mayor or recorder to go with me or we'll have to do it. I don't think I can do it as a representative of the city, cause I'm not a signatory.
I would imagine it's probably Wes.
Wes and I will plan a date to get down.
Wes is the official record keeper for us.
Okay.
Um, can we file them one at a time or do we have to file?
We have to file this first. The statute said to get this first. Once it's filed, then you can do the other things.
Okay.
So, sooner than later.
Okay, uh, the broadband we talked about.
Twenty-nine.
The wards we talked about, so we're in too bad a shape as far as following the priority list.
Oh, I'd like to add to that bullet. Uh, we need to have an ordinance that directs the election commission on how , uh, council members are elected. We have to decide if we're gonna do it by ward or we're gonna do it partially by at-large or all at-large. We have to choose the option.
That's right.
We need an ordinance to tell them how to do it.
Well, there, I think there's also something in there.
We discussed this a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
We've discussed it, but we need an ordinance to dir- direct them how it's done. And that's done after the wards are established, and they're not established yet.
I added it as a bullet for, um, October.
Okay.
Cause we can be working on the draft of the ordinance in the session of the third reading.
Yes.
Okay, uh, we got a lot to do yet before the end of the year. If anybody has anything else they wanna add to it that you're willing to do.
Um, there's something else that, you know, that comes along, kinda like the, um, ordinance on, uh, what are you calling it? Bill, you know, enforcement code, you know, property code is the, um, uh, trash collection. You know, that was, I don't know whether, I think we probably got too much to do to address this this year.
There's, in, in the, in the section on health and sanitation, what, if you look at the municipal code, solid waste and garbage is one of the, one of the se- sections entitled by it. And, um, if, if you look at, uh, like, Marigold and Green Forest, um, they, that's where they put their, the whole thing about establishing a county solid waste, uh, district. And, uh, so, um, we're not one of the founding cities of that district, so I'm not gonna just cut and paste that whole thing, but, um, that's, you know, for, for our first pass of this, you know, of getting health and sanitation ordinance is passed, I think I'm gonna leave that section blank and just say. blank and just say reserved for future solid waste. Because I, I think we need to, that's another one of those things where we, we have to have some basis for making a decision. We could, we have the authority to just, or you guys have the authority, to just say we're going to go with Carroll County, but if we're really interested in hearing what the public has to say, and there's four other businesses working here in Holiday Island, we probably do need to see what their capabilities are. We probably need to generate a document of what are we looking for in a trash collection.
I said, I said, we probably just don't have time to do it this year. I, it, but it's, it's a, it's a priority.
It's, it's definitely on the to-do list. Okay, anything else on the priorities?
Did you have a bullet in between now and the end of the year for doing the health and sanitation ordinances that you said you wanted to get going?
Yeah, well, yeah, I had, I had, as a bullet item, I had workshop on health and sanitation ordinance. I'm not sure we're going to do the workshop. I think we're just going to, we're just going to adopt an ordinance. I've been doing all the research. I've read more health and sanitation community codes than, than I ever thought I'd have to. I'll, I'll add that as a bullet to, to pass an ordinance.
You said you want to get it done the next couple of months, so I wrote end of November.
Okay. Public comments?
Oh, before we go to public comments.
Okay.
I did include Wes's financial statements for the month of August. Was it August? This is September.
Yes.
I didn't know if we wanted, did we decide we had to approve them or just acknowledge them or something?
Just acknowledge them, and I, quite frankly, I forgot to put it on the agenda.
And it wasn't on the agenda, and I forgot to mention it earlier.
I think the terms accept or something.
But if, or accept them or whatever, I, I, I will post them after the meeting.
And, well, initially, I think the first of the month, I had distributed on my old Excel spreadsheet formula, and then when I got the new accounting software, I distributed using the new software.
Yeah, I think I had one question though about, if I could mention that.
Not on the agenda.
I know.
Wait for any sort of comments.
How are you doing this under Commissioner Collins?
I think prior, prior to this new statement format, didn't you have a cash ledger? Statement?
Cash.
I didn't attach that.
I'm not sure that, that that's all reflected in here, really.
I, there is a report to do that. I figured you already had it.
We don't have it for August, though.
Yeah, I do.
We didn't? Okay.
Should have been on that, in the old format.
I don't think it was attached to the same email.
There was two separate emails, the first one.
There are.
Okay.
You, you had, you first one came out with this Excel spreadsheet, and the next one came out with the software.
I'll go back and look.
I can't tell you which was, what was in one or who's the other.
What was that?
I said, I can't, she's mentioned one, then something went in one, and that, I, that I don't remember, but there were, there were two different ones.
Did you want to talk about population?
G I, well, everybody got the email. I guess for the general public, I can make a, a report on that. The Treasury, Arkansas Treasury asked G I S to do a new population estimate for an official new population estimate for Holiday Island based on the 2020 census, which they did, and they sent us a copy of the letter that they sent back to, to Treasury, very detailed, indicating that the official, their official population estimate for Holiday Island is twenty-three-hundred-and-ninety-nine people, which is a six-point-one-or-two-percent increase over the previous estimate of twenty-two-hundred-and-sixty. And, and they have the maps in there of how they do the estimate and everything else, so it's, it's pretty accurate, I think.
So will that be the new population we use going forward for getting money and everything else?
At some point, the Treasury will start using 2020 census numbers for distributing turnback money and whatever money we get from state.
Probably will not be to our advantage because a lot of the other cities in Arkansas.
That's what we don't know. That's what we don't know, is that, you know, if all the cities grew by six percent on average, then our revenue will stay the same. It's just that the same pie will get cut up in a lot of smaller pieces, and you'll still get the same number of pieces you always got.
There were a lot of them that were complaining that they were reduced.
Yeah, yes, a lot of the smaller.
Said it wasn't true.
Yeah, but, but every one of them, every one of them that was complaining was a small town in a rural county. And in fact, the numbers probably were true, and they just don't want to admit it. Because most of those.
They said they had more water meters than they had population. Really? I mean, that was some of the comments, if you read the comments on community.
Yep. But there could be a lot of water meters hooked up to empty houses.
Or.
I don't know. We, I, I don't, I, I don't imagine that the Treasury will start using those new numbers mid-year. I'm guessing they'll start with that in January, so we'll, we'll know at some point.
I think overall, that Arkansas populations increased around three percent, as I recall. I looked at that. So if we're up six, that should affect, for instance, the sales tax turnback.
Well, hopefully it'll be positive, but it's not going to be significant.
I, I really don't anticipate it being negative, but it may not be positive by the full six percent.
I say, I don't think it's going to be really significant. I think it, I think we'll see a gradual increase.
That puts us a hundred and one people away from a first-class city. That's worrisome.
In ten, in ten years, worry about it.
They don't do intermediate ones?
It says they may do another one in 2023, a special census program in 2023.
Well, they were so successful in 2020, yeah.
But from what I've seen, that does not mean that we, if we go over twenty-five-hundred, that we have to be a first-class city.
Yeah, I have to do some more research on that. I've, I've never seen anything to say that we can petition to stay a second-class city, but I know that, like, Eureka Springs doesn't have the population to be a city of first class, but they petition to become, to become one, because it gives them a lot more taxing authority, but I, I'm not worried about it. I, you know, the law says that, that the, that the distribution is based on the population established in the dicennial census, not in any interim census that they might choose to do, so. But that doesn't mean that, that doesn't mean that Fayetteville or some place that's blossoming and growth might not push to have new numbers.
Where, where, where did that came from, the state treasurer?
Came from the Department of Transportation and Shared Services is where it came from. The Arkansas Department of Transportation and Credit, or Shared Services.
Because if you call up the.
Which is what G I S is part of, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's the subtitle at the bottom, Arkansas Geographical Information Systems, yes. Did you call up budget?
Well, the, I, I sent Dan a thing. They sent an updated table on the 2020 census, and, you know, where are the census population district or whatever in that? This number is significantly larger, not significantly, but it shows twenty-three-fifty-three for that expanded area. And that was.
Which is the 2010 census number? Twenty-three-fifty-three is what, what it was in, in 2010.
Okay, then the new one's twenty-three-seventy-three, when I, twenty.
Twenty-three-seventy-three was the 2010, twenty-three-fifty-three would be the different.
Well, to quote Sandy Martin from Eureka, the, the census is all screwed up, so. It's been hanging, there's several things already.
Well, that's, you know, according to the state, that's what our official population is right now. I guess subject to change if something happens. Any public comments?
I'd like to thank you all for all the time and effort you volunteered into this city council, and I hope that Judge Barr, Judge Barr soon realizes his civic duty to give us the money we deserve.
How much is that money?
Eighty-five thousand.
A year or?
A year.
A year.
I, I just really ticked because they, in that, they sent that out admitting that they agreed to it, and then, but I don't want to see them get away with it.
We're working on it.
Mr. Mary, I have a.
Thank you for your comments.
Your work. Commissioner, council comments, then?
There you go.
I had a moment to remind me, do we have, now that we have assets and computer equipment and what have you in our office, do we have renters insurance to cover that property in case the building burns or the doors are open at night?
It needs, we need an inland marine policy.
The next group realizes there's a city office.
Yes, sir. Do we have renters insurance covering our assets?
We need an inland marine policy.
I do not, I don't think we have renters insurance.
We need an inland marine policy to cover it.
Okay.
Not a renter policy.
Okay. Interim marine?
Inland marine.
Inland marine, okay.
You want me to get a quote?
Well, the assets aren't very much.
Are you sure we don't have that covered with the municipality?
I don't think so. I'll call, I'll call them if you want.
Yeah, I'll make sure, because it's, it's a minor amount.
They could, they could furnish it, but it's really not very much. I mean.
I know, it's like forty dollars a year, isn't it?
I, based on so much per thousand, yeah, it's not very much. I can, I'll find out.
Yeah. We also need to pass an ordinance establishing what our policy is for capitalization. Are we going to capitalize anything, you know, everything over a thousand dollars? Everything over five thousand? Everything, anything with a ten-year useful life or how we're going to do it?
Ten?
We'll, we'll let our treasurer make a recommendation on that.
Don't forget all the computer equipment.
But, yes.
Right.
We, I think.
It's on.
I think that's a Dan, right now, probably, I think we only have three things more than a thousand dollars. That would be two laptops and the Moroccan, which we don't have.
That would go to five, and you don't have to capitalize it, depreciate it.
You don't have to depreciate it, that's the main thing. We do need to have a list of everything we own so that it doesn't just disappear and nobody knows what happened to it, but.
Well, you're responsible for it.
But we don't want a lot of, yeah, because I'm responsible for it. But we don't want, we don't want to make a common exercise out of depreciating something when there's no benefit to depreciation expense.
It's just a statistical cost.
Well, and, and that, you might go, if you have depreciation on capital assets, that might go into the audit reports now, too. I don't know. That would be new since I did, in those audits, because back then, they were only cash receipts and cash. Now, under governmental accounting, after.
I guess it's a way of expressing the useful life of your assets and whether you're replacing them as fast as you're using them, but.
Since right.
I always thought depreciation was just a tax advantage. One other thing, Justin mentioned, Justin asked me if we've passed our ordinance yet establishing our tax millage for next year, because we have to pass an ordinance establishing that and then notify the county.
But you passed one that says zero?
I said, we don't intend to have a property tax, and he said, hmm, he's never heard of that before.
That's my bet. If we don't do it, then it's zero.
Well, and he, he said, he suggested that we pass an ordinance anyway with the millage set at zero.
Okay.
And, and he's going to draft an ordinance for me, because he does that for all of his other client cities, and that way it'll get us in the practice of doing it every year in case we do want to levy and the lose someday. All right. Any other council member comments? Okay, next regular meeting is Thursday, eighteenth. Tuesday and October, whenever that is.
We hit them.
Eighteen?
Nineteen. Nineteen.
Okay, budget workshop. I, I looked, I was looking at ten-five because I figured I'd have everything I needed by then, but Wes is going to be gone at that time, and he really needs to be here for the budget workshop.
But I'd like to be gone. And I'd like to be gone. I'm planning on, I need to be gone on the seventh for sure, so I won't see nobody.
Okay.
Do you have an alternate?
I'll be gone on the seventh, Tuesday.
We, I mean, we, we have plenty of time. We can do it late October.
We'll be, we'll be back the eleventh, I think.
I get to, I get to go to home.
I mean, we'll be driving back the eleventh every night, so, you know, okay, after the eleventh.
Somebody want to pick a date, and then everybody can go home and check their calendars?
How about?
Check with their wife?
The second Tuesday or something like that.
Well, that second Tuesday is our planning commission meeting.
It is? Second Tuesday?
Always is.
Well, then we can't do it Tuesday.
It's the fourth Tuesday in October.
We need to have it before the regular meeting, I think, you know?
Well, we don't have to approve the budget until, actually, we don't have to approve the budget until January, but.
I suggest.
You have to submit one in December.
I have to submit one, yeah.
Yeah, well, if, if we don't approve a budget until January, we can't spend any money until after we approve the budget, so that would be then in January.
We'll approve the budget in December, which means we got all of October and all of November to ponder it, so there's really no rush.
Why don't, why don't?
Well, it's gonna.
Let Wes come up with a date that he wants to do, where he feels comfortable doing it.
I mean, I would say, well, the twelfth or later, the twelfth wouldn't be much time.
That's my planning commission.
I know, and it wouldn't give me much time after we get back. And do you want to do it on a Tuesday, or is some other day okay?
Some other day is okay.
Maybe it works for me. Won't be golfing anymore in November.
Well, Pat will be, but I would think, that's why I got the cover from the golf cart.
What about Monday afternoon, the eighteenth?
Usually Mondays are fine with us. They're pretty much open, Mondays and Thursdays, and we normally. And we normally don't have much going on, although on Thursdays, a lot of times we'll schedule doctor's appointments.
What was that date, Linda?
Monday, the eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth, that would be fine.
Board commissioners is in the morning, that morning in this room, but if we did it in the afternoon, yeah.
Eighteenth of October, tentative, okay.
We want to do it later in the day in case they have a long meeting because they'll be in the budget process too.
Two or three?
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock on the eighteenth.
Okay. Any announcements? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a second?
Come on, you guys.
Second.
Ken made the motion, then Jerry seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The votes?